All right, Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. The first item on the agenda is Student Activity Account for Taunton High School, looking to be replenished in the amount of fourteen thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion is made to be filed for fourteen, six eighty-two, ninety-six.
Chair seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. Next item is Bill's Payable Warrant in the amount of one million, forty thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So moved.
Chair seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. And Madam Assistant Superintendent, Facilities Update.
Just a quick update that we have begun the high school athletic field project. As you go by there, you have seen, you can see that everything is being torn up. So hopefully, things are going very smoothly thus far, and target date to be finished is in August. The second thing is that currently, the business office, Susan Bullock and Teresa Raphael, both of our supervisors in the business office, have been working alongside myself, have been working with the city, attending some Munis meetings for the upcoming integration. So I can't thank them enough to help along with that project as well. And that's a, and then we're just finishing up for the FY twenty-two budget, and then closing out this year, and then beginning, of course, for the next school year very soon. And that is it.
Okay. Motion being ordered to receive and placed on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Chair seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Anything for the good of the order, Mr. Superintendent.
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, we're out of here.
Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, God. In this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan will lead us in prayer.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And we-
Moment of silence?
Yes. We have a moment of silence for two individuals. We have, first of all, Emily Pacheco, the mother of Senator Mark Pacheco, who passed away on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, at Long Meadow. Her husband passed away a couple of years ago, so Mark has now lost both of his parents. She was an absolutely wonderful woman. I, I don't think I ever saw her be upset with anybody. She cared about people, was a devoted mother to her children and her grandchildren. She was involved in all kinds of activities where she volunteered for the American Cancer Society, Girl Scouts of America, Cub Scouts of America, hospice care, and was a member of St. Anthony Holy Rosary Sedality, and won the Marion Medal for her service to the church, Morton Hospital retirees, and just a whole bunch of stuff she did. So, and, and I, every time I met her, she always had a smile on her face, and she was just caring about this whole community. And I know her family will miss her. She is survived by Mark Pacheco and his wife Barbara, and the, and her daughter Linda, her husband Jim, and three grandchildren. And my thoughts and prayers, as well as all this committee, are with her and her family that they go through this very difficult time. And we also lost Joan Lyons, who is the mother-in-law of, to Cheryl Lyons, who is the district's Title One and McVinnie Vento Secretary. So our sympathies go out to, to Cheryl Lyons because of the loss of her mother, who we will also keep in our prayers. And one other thing, we would like to make a statement to the City of Taunton about what happened in Uvalde, Texas. We all watched with grief and sadness the situation that unfolded in Uvalde, Texas. The City of Taunton and the Taunton Public Schools collectively mourn for the victims of this tragedy, and we offer our deepest and sincerest condolences to the families involved. And I would like to also ask for a moment of silence for all the lives lost in that unfortunate incident. Roll call, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Pulowski?
Here.
Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Mr. George?
Present.
Mr. Vera?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present, and Mayor O'Connell?
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of May eighteenth and May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Agreed.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. There is no student advisory committee report this evening as they are at prom. Very exciting. So we will go to public input. Is there any public input this evening?
This is public input.
Okay. So we will move on from that. Right to Taunton Public Schools Emergency Operation Plans and Procedures Presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this evening, we have some distinguished guests in the audience. So I'd like Mrs. Perry, the Director of Student Services and Transportation, to make her way to the podium, and I'll let her introduce her distinguished guests. And this was a presentation that we were planning to conduct later on, into the next school year, but we felt in light of what transpired in Texas recently, we thought it would be important to provide the community, as well as the school board. We have four new members on the school committee who have not had the opportunity to hear from our local police department, as well as Mrs. Perry, all the measures that the Taunton Public Schools, in collaboration with the Taunton Police Department, the Fire Department, and also Brewster Ambulance, our emergency response team, all the systems and all the measures we have in place to protect our students, staff, and also the supports that we put in place to support our students' mental health and their well-being. So at this time, I'll turn things over to Kathy. I just want to reiterate that if you look on the back of the agenda, we did list executive session. If the committee would like to take a deeper dive into our work and into our collaboration with the police department, and really understand the procedures and the way the police department, working with the Taunton Public Schools, would respond to a crisis, I would ask that someone make a motion to go out of order. We go into executive session, and we can continue the conversation in executive session where that would be appropriate. This would be a very high-level overview, and again, if you need to take a deeper dive, we can always have this information shared with you during executive session. So without further ado, I'll turn things over to Mrs. Perry, who has worked very strategically to make sure our emergency response plans were updated this year, which many of you know this is Kathleen's final year with the Taunton Public Schools. So Kathy, please, the floor is yours.
So, thank you, Superintendent Cabral. And yes, that is correct. Generally, we do this presentation in the fall, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to, to present this in the spring, because it will be the last time I do present to the school committee. So I am very proud of the work that I've been able to do in conjunction with, with our Taunton Police Department. And so tonight, I have with me Lieutenant Eric Nichols, Lieutenant Glenn Jackson, and one of our SROs, Casey Holmes, along with Stephanie Hoy, who, as you know, will soon be the Director of Student Services, Transportation, and Title Nine Coordinator. And so through, throughout the past four years, we've worked collaboratively, and that's putting it mildly. We work consistently, constantly, together, and all in an effort to keep our students, Taunton Public Schools, safe. And so it's not just about the doors and the locks and all of the things that we hear about, it's so much more. And so what we wanted to do tonight was to talk, yes, about the programming and about the supports that we do provide for the Taunton Public Schools, but what we wanted to do was just take a look at all of the programs that we've been able to, to actually enhance through a lot of our ESR funds. And so this is a very broad, general list of programs, and as Mr. Cabral said, if you wanted to dive a little bit deeper, we certainly would have the opportunity to do that. But what I thought I'd do is just start with some of the mental health supports that we have provided with our students, and just explain to you how we have taken some of the supports that we have put in through the work of Mr. Barata, who, as you know, had this position before I did, and how we've been able to take those supports and just continue to increase and build upon them. And I imagine Mrs. Hoy will continue that work as she moves into this position. So when we began our Family Welcome Center, we went from four community facilitators to now ten community facilitators, and we've been able to place those community facilitators in all of our buildings. And their role is vast. They're able to get into the homes, work with families, supply basic needs to our families, communicate with our families in a variety of languages. We presently have seven team chairs, and I know that may not sound like a lot for a large district, but the work that the team chairs do in regards to organizing, setting up the IEP meetings, enables our guidance counselors to then do the work that they're really designed to do, and that's working with students. We've increased our guidance counselors from eighteen point five to twenty-one point five. We've increased our adjustment counselors from twelve to fifteen. We presently have thirteen on staff as we're continuing to hire, we're looking to hire two more. We've increased our school psychologists from eight to ten. We currently have nine on staff, we're looking to hire another. We've increased our assistant principals from twelve to twenty-one, and that's an incredible increase, because by doing that, it also provides more support to the classroom. By having more administrators in the building, it enables all, you know, it enables us to provide more supports to the students, and then in turn, more supports to the teachers. Through your support as a committee, we've been able to help solidify this position of Director of School Counseling, which is so, so badly needed. You know, we have a district team of SEL, Social Emotional Learning Child Study, where each building had its own individual child study, but we now have a district team that was started by myself, Judy Mulrooney, the former Special Education Director, and Dr. Linda Watt, and it's, it's, it's very effective in early identification of students, and it's not just special education students, it's students that really need some additional support. And we've been able to, we piloted it initially in four schools, and now we've been able to branch it out through, through all the schools. We, you may have heard the term open circle in the past, and we had pockets of open circle throughout our district, and now we have, thanks again to your supports, a pre-K to seven social emotional curriculum, the Mind Up Curriculum in pre-K to seven. So we've done a tremendous amount of work in supporting our mental health of our students in Taunton Public Schools. If you move over to the next quadrant, this is where we've done the work that I'm really proud of, along with the Taunton Police Department. So I'm going to actually ask, you know, if I can ask Eric and Glenn and Casey to maybe step up and talk a little bit about some of the cooperative work that we've done together. So Eric, if you want to, I think it's important, yeah, to talk about maybe some of the stuff that we have at the high school that's now trickled down.
Yeah, so one of the things, I don't know if you're going to go through the list, but right currently, we have four school resource officers, five, we just put a fifth on, and myself and Lieutenant Jackson currently supervise the program on different aspects at different levels. I think we're very proud. We started about twenty years ago doing active shooter-type training in the, in the Taunton Police Department under the direction of Chief Walsh. We've been very, very aggressive in doing that training for all of our staff. Our equipment is, is completely up to speed, and we do a lot of training. We also took that training, and we did it cooperatively with the school department. I don't know anybody that's ever done this before. We actually put all the school administrators a few years ago, right before COVID, through some of our training, and they participated in that type of training, so they would know what to expect, and now how to better serve their, their individual buildings. Once we did that, we have all different types of programs that we work together. Like I said, a lot of these programs, it's hard to quantify success, because these programs are all designed to, to have problems not happen. So it's hard to quantify the success of these programs, and that's why for Superintendent Cabral and for Chief Walsh, it takes a lot of courage and it takes a lot of ingenuity, I guess, sometimes with the finances, to make all this happen, because none of this stuff is obviously inexpensive. But we have a diversion program. So the, the first thing we talk about school resource officers, I always like to tell people that there's a difference between school police and school resource officers, and a lot of people don't understand the difference, and it's important that you understand the difference, because when there's a discussion sometimes about removing schools from the, removing police officers from the schools, it's usually a discussion surrounding school police. School police are there as the traditional law enforcement branch, and they end up being the strong arm of the school department, which technically, we don't buy into, we don't believe in that in this community, we don't apply that to the Taunton school system. We have school resource officers, they're much, much different. They are, they go to, they're mandated to go to training, they operate on a completely different model, which is the old San Jose model. Basically, they say ninety percent of anything that happens in a school with discipline should be handled conjunctively with, with the school department and administratively, not criminally, because the last thing we want to do is all these kids growing up is start giving them criminal records, right? So we have to be out of the box, we have to be innovative, and our chief has allowed us to do that. The school department has been real innovative with all these programs that we're going to list out, and that's the important part, because the two things, if you talk about school safety, there's two things that are paramount over everything. And the first one is single-point entry, and everybody knows what that is, right? Single-point entry. But the other one is, is basically talking about all these programs, is early intervention or early warning systems. Those are the things that you should have in place if you really want to truly have a good safety program. Early warning systems is just as important as that single-point access, because yes, lock doors work in keeping people out of our schools that don't belong there and things like that, but we want to have all these programs in place, and the school resources officers work with the school department to make sure none of these things even happen. And that's the key to our program. So I think Kathy would be proud of a lot of these programs. We started listing them out yesterday, I was kind of shocked at how many things we actually do. So if you go through the list, we have the diversion program with the juvenile court. Now Roger Olivera has been, you know, instrumental in that. We find, and a lot of that was solidified through the Juvenile Reform Act of twenty-eighteen, where a lot of crimes that they took away from even charging a juvenile criminally is now a diversion program in court. So that, we have not only supported with the Taunton Police Department and the school department, but we're now being supported by the juvenile court as well, with different types of diversion programs. Trickle down to the elementary schools. That was one of the things I think we all looked at probably eight, ten years ago, maybe? Eight, ten years ago, we looked at Taunton High, there was great resources at Taunton High, there was the access center, there was all kind of adjustment councils, everything was available at Taunton High for students in need, students in crisis, anything like that. But we didn't see that as much trickling down, and we found that our SROs and Kathy and everybody else on earth, that would be very busy at the middle schools and the elementary schools. So thanks to Kathy, we pretty much started to do all these different programs, and all the principals of the elementaries, they demanded that all these programs trickle down to the elementaries. So I'm proud to say, and I know, you know, I'm heavily involved in the schools, and so is my whole family, that all these resources that are available to kids, and they're available at every level in our schools, not just at the high school level. And one of the things that Kathy touched on is the increase in assistant principals. The, the little things that you don't see when you increase the APs, that allows myself and, you know, Ms. Hoy is one of the principals, we've been to many, they are allowed to, the principals and the APs actually do home visits, and that's kind of different than any school department, because a lot of school departments, or before a lot of these APs, they couldn't leave the building because they were needed there, right? So now they have coverage in the building, they can go out with the SROs, with myself, we've done it many times, right? And deal with kids in crisis, because as, as we have a program in the Taunton Police Department, we have mental health workers riding on our cruises, we don't want to be that front face sometimes in this uniform to that child in crisis, but we have to also make sure it's safe for somebody to go there and deal with that child in crisis. So we go collectively, and we've done it many, many times, and I don't know any of the school department that the administrators are getting out of those buildings, and, because they know the kids best, right? If you're working in the school, they know the kids best. So that's a program, I think, that, you know, the hidden benefit of having all these APs has really helped us with. I mean, going down the list, let's see. Drug involvement programs, I know they got a grant program for that, and you can probably speak better to them.
Yeah, so I mean, we have, you know, we have the High Point Program at the high school, we call it Strive, we've now brought that down to the middle school, we have, you know, the Signs of Suicide Program, we've brought that down to the middle school through the Attorney General's Office, all the lunch bunch and support groups that we once had at the high school, we now have those at the middle school and the elementary school. We've also, we had community, you know, CCBC Community Counseling of Bristol County, we now have branched out, we're now partnering with other community counseling agencies. We have the Drug Endangered Children's Initiative, which is, again, in conjunction with the police department, so when the police department gets a call and a child, a child is in the home and there's been a trauma, they, they reach out to us, so we're able to then be proactive when the child goes to school, we're, we're able to notify the administration, the, the Warm Welcome Program that we have with the SROs, again, all our SROs are notified.
And it goes both ways on that, too.
And it goes both ways, so it, it's kind of, you know, in, in order to, to have these early warning signs, you have to put both things together. You have to support the student and the family, and you have to work together with the police department. That's the way that it works. And so I guess we feel very fortunate here in Taunton, because we have that relationship, and we have that positive relationship, and students will be able to feel comfortable, they'll be able to open up, and in turn, their families will too. And so that's, that's really how it works. And so we decided that, we wanted to have an opportunity to just share with you some of the work that's happening behind the scenes, a lot of the things that maybe families don't know that's happening in the schools. Just to kind of summarize some of the securities that we already have in the building, I think we talked about our keyless entry, every single building has a keyless entry with the FOB access. We have, we've added additional interior and exterior cameras, we have over five hundred cameras in the district, we've added additional radios to every building, we have the single-point access, the Crisis Go training for staff, and we've also talked a little bit more about offering additional training to staff. We've done every building, however, if there are staff members that want additional training with the Crisis Go, or perhaps they weren't present when we offered the training, we're willing to do that together with the police department, we can do it either virtually or in person, or if they were present and they just feel like they want more training, we're certainly willing to do that as well. We've taken our high school security person, and they actually are available during the day as well as in the evening. In the past, we only had them around in the evening, now they're available during the day and in the evening. We've got lots of steps that we're working on, on doing. I know Stephanie has a lot of plans that she is looking forward to doing. Steph, if you want to talk a little bit about some of the things that you're planning to do?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to come up and speak to you about next year's planning, but we had the opportunity today to sit down and talk a little bit about certain trainings that we do with our staff on a yearly basis, and coming up with a schedule so that we are front-loading that into the beginning of the year. So so many, so many of the emergency trainings that we do throughout the year, but do them relatively within the first month to five weeks of school, alongside and collaboratively with our fire department and our police department, and then do it again the second half of the school year, because some of our current drills, sometimes we're doing into the school year, and by then, if something, if there was an emergency of some sort, we would just want to make sure our students are very well-prepared for that.
So as we said, you know, obviously, we don't get into all of the details of all of our preparation and all of our response training, but we just wanted to have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about, and provide the public a little bit about some of the supports that we do have in the building and, and beyond in the community, so.
Okay. Thank you. I will open up for questions if anyone has questions, but I just want to thank you for all that you guys do all year long for our kids. I know that our, our police officers, our teachers, the administrative staff wear many different hats, and the fact that you work so closely together, you develop all these programs together for our kids, is just a wonderful thing for our families and our children, and bringing it down to the middle school and the elementary school is so important, because to make those relationships with the kids when they're young, and get them any services or help they might need when they're young, is just going to be a much better outcome and benefit for them as they go through the school system, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi. I just want to deeply thank all of you for all the work that you do. I think, you know, some of us have the benefit of hearing these presentations over the years, so I know all the comprehensive work that you do to keep our kids safe. I'm hoping that there's people watching this at home so they can get that sense of, of safety. Like, I send my two kids and my wife to these schools every single day, and when these things happen in the news, it, it hurts you in your guts and you feel afraid, but I know all the great collaborative work that's being done in this district comprehensively, hitting it from all angles. So like, from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys for everything that you do.
Thanks for saying that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to comment on the quality of the officers that we have working with us. So I've worked with both Lieutenant Nichols and Lieutenant Jackson on other things not related to schools, and know how, how good they are in the community. I've been involved with some prosecutions that Lieutenant Nichols was involved with, Lieutenant Jackson did a lecture in my, one of my home buying classes on home safety. So I, I know they know their material, and I know they know how to deal with the public, and obviously, our two administrators. I know Mrs. Perry, going back to her classroom days, and I've known Mrs. Hoy a very long, very long time, too, and I'm very confident in the leadership of all these people, and I just look forward to seeing it implemented.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Okay. Superintendent Cabral?
So I think, one, excellent presentation, and I don't believe you covered all the quadrants, so I'd just like to take a few minutes just to talk about some of the proactive steps that we're planning on for the summer and into the following school year. So part of Mrs. Hoy's work, when she takes on her new role, will be to conduct safety assessments at all our schools during the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Part of that safety assessment, think of it as an audit. When you perform an audit, you find areas where you're deficient, and then you make, you make improvements, working with Student Services, Special Education, as well as Assistant Superintendent Brenda Moynihan, for any infrastructure improvements that are needed. We'll continue our district-wide training with our police officers. We've learned many lessons from the Mulcahy Construction Project that we plan on replicating in all our schools, so that work will be ongoing. One of the new safety measures that we discussed today, we've done a great job with numbering all our school doors, now we plan on numbering all our windows, all our classroom windows. So if there ever is a crisis and a need to respond, we can identify the classroom number, and the police or whoever's responding can report to that window on the exterior of the building and be able to provide support. So we think that'll be, again, an enhanced system. Looking on the technology side, we're going to install a new intercom system at Taunton High School. Believe it or not, the renovation happened almost fourteen years ago, and we need to replace that intercom system. that intercom system. Adding additional signage, which we know acts as a deterrent, so people are mindful that they are being recorded when they enter our schools. Something as simple as changing all our phones over from analog to VoIP, that is crucial in a 911 situation, because with the VoIP phones, the emergency dispatch, they're able to identify the room where the call is coming from. So when the emergency responders come to the school, they know exactly where to respond versus wasting valuable seconds, valuable minutes in an office trying to identify or trying to determine where they need to respond. We're in the process of upgrading our FOB system to identification cards that will also serve as a FOB. So that way, FOBS cannot be exchanged, FOBS cannot be shared with other individuals, because they will have the person's face on it who has access to get into the buildings. We talked about additional signage and obviously our response training. And something that we probably should discuss in executive session at a future meeting is Crisis Go. Because with Crisis Go, all our police officers, not just our SROs, whether they're on a detail, SRO, or off-duty, all our SROs, all the entire, the entire Taunton Police Force will receive that alarm and be, correct me if I'm wrong, Lieutenant Nichols, be told to respond in real time. And the, and the response time, I believe, was two minutes at most?
Yeah, it's not just the response time of the actual alarm. I'm pretty loud anyways.
I'll put it on.
It's, it's not just the response time of the actual officers in the event of the emergency, usually through the Crisis Go app, the 911 system is actually notified even quicker. It's, it's instantaneous and immediate, so even the dispatch goes out quicker. It's just, it bridges the gap of communication, basically. We can talk, like you said, in more an executive session, the particulars of it, but just think of it as, in an emergency, the only thing we lacked up to about four years ago was communication within that emergency. So you have a teacher that's in, in a crisis situation, and the school may be going into a lockdown, but there's not information being shared of what's the best-case practices, what does the police department want everybody to do to make everybody safe? Superintendent Cabral can take the, the credit for that. We, he asked us when he first took over as superintendent, what, what can we do to make these things better? And that's one of the things I said to him, I says, you know, and, and we were about to implement it just before COVID hit, and then the schools, obviously, were remote, so now we're bringing it back up and running. But, you know, like you said, that takes courage of the superintendent and the chief to say, you know, what can we do? We're always looking to do better. And, and that's scary sometimes, because it makes it look like you're not doing everything you can do. But like you said, the superintendent said, what can we do better? And we said they bring this app, this communication app to light, and he made it happen, so I applaud him for that.
And the last thing I'll just add is, I think you mentioned it earlier, Lieutenant Nichols, that not, it's unfortunate that not every school department and police department have the collaborative work relationship that we have here in Taunton. So I'm grateful to you and to your colleagues and as well as Chief Walsh for always continuing to have that open dialogue, so that we can have the latest, the greatest, and what we believe are the most efficient practices, most modern practices in place in Taunton Public Schools to provide that layer of safety and sense of safety for our student staff, as well as our families, as you and I both have children in the school system.
We do. And that, and that's the key to all this safety stuff, is that cooperative working effort. I know we've said it over and over tonight, but that is the key to it. I don't think there's probably two days that go by that Kathy and I wouldn't be talking on the phone about some crisis, and a lot, a lot of times they're minor crises. But even the major stuff, we've had different, you know, crises within the schools, and immediately you have a team of administrators from the Taunton School Department, you have a team of administrators from the police department, and, and together and collectively, we come up with the best-case scenario and best how to deal with that thing. And even this recently, you know, at, it was a pole school, we had a team of people come together and come to a quick resolution, because we have a lot of resources available to us, you know, through FBI Fusion Centers and things like that. So it's nice for the school department to have access to all that information, you know, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. Laura?
Just let me again thank all of you for what you do to ensure that our community is safe. It shows you in the presentation that we're working together, and both you and the school system is, it's great, great to see. Continued success. Thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening. Okay, so we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in my superintendent's report, I want to announce two new appointments. One, the Food Service Director position, and second, something that I'm very proud of, being a former soccer player, we have a new women's soccer coach taking over Taunton High School. So first, it is a great joy that I proudly announce Mr. Glenn Motta as the new Director of Food Services for the Taunton Public Schools. Mr. Motta has worked closely with current Director of Food Services Karen Papa since July 2019, when he was, when he was appointed Assistant Director of Food Services and Purchasing. I cannot imagine a more suitable candidate to take on this role for the Taunton Public School District. Mr. Motta will take on his new role following the retirement of Mrs. Papa, which, depending on some sick time vacation days, should take place around August 19th. Mr. Motta holds an Associate of Arts in Liberal Studies degree from the Community College of Rhode Island. Glenn has an exemplary nine-year career with Aramark, gaining extensive K-12 education managerial experience. Glenn has managed two school districts with revenues of excess of $1.8 million in the food service account, and has also worked in food systems or managed food systems that served over 600,000 meals annually. He was responsible for all administrative responsibilities, including monthly reimbursement claim reports, free and reduced lunch application process, payroll submissions of purchase orders, and processing all invoices. Glenn is also a Massachusetts Certified Purchasing Official, MCPPO. Glenn is hardworking, conscientious, a team-oriented individual who thrived under Karen Papa's leadership, and I am very excited to see the direction in, in which the Taunton Public Schools Food Service Department will, will move under his direction. Glenn was scheduled to attend the meeting tonight, unfortunately, he had a family situation that required his attention, so I promised to bring him before the school board at a later meeting. Second, I'm very proud to announce that we have Danny Borges, who will be taking over as the Taunton High School Girls Soccer Coach, beginning in fall of 2022. Mr. Borges currently serves as the Director of Coaching for the Taunton Youth Soccer League, a position he's held since 2017. In this role, he organizes and oversees all aspects of player coaching and development of the spring and fall programs. He also introduced and continues to develop strategies for the summer and winter programs, including securing fields and training locations, camps, and tournaments. He also currently serves as the Director of Coaching for the New England Navigators, which is a premier youth soccer club serving boys and girls throughout Massachusetts. As a Director of Coaching, Mr. Borges is responsible for the overall development of the club's game model. So not only will he be teaching the students X's and O's, he'll be introducing a philosophy or a style of play that will begin as early as the eighth grade program all the way through students in the 12th grades. That excites me as a former soccer player, to see someone coming into the high school who can actually bring a philosophy and bring a program that has proven to be very successful. Mr. Borges served as the Coyle and Cassidy High School Boys Coach for Soccer from 1983 to 2016, the Taunton Eagles Soccer Club Head Coach from 1992 to 2000, and again, from 2002 to 2013, and the Taunton Sports Club Assistant Coach since 1989. Borges also holds numerous coaching certifications, too many to list, but they're, they're in the report for you to review. So I am very excited about the future of women's soccer at Taunton High School and the direction in which the soccer program will be heading in the near future. Earlier this year, we announced several students signing national letters of intent, where we recently learned that Taunton High School wrestler Christian Valmaine has committed to Iowa Lakes Community College. Taunton High School wrestler Christian Valmaine has committed to wrestling at the collegiate level in the fall 2022. He will be attending Iowa Lakes Community College in Iowa to pursue a wrestling, to pursue wrestling at the collegiate level. He is hopeful that after his two-year successful run at the community college, he will obtain a full scholarship to a four-year program. And anyone who follows wrestling knows that Iowa is a hotbed for collegiate wrestling. Christian has been wrestling for the past five years at Taunton High School. During that time, he has won 122 of his 183 matches, which is nearly a 70% winning percentage, so he nearly wins seven out of 10 matches. He has participated, he, he also has had 63 pins, 233 takedowns, 58 escapes, and 30 reversals. And anyone who needs a tutorial in wrestling, Mr. Barata is available after this meeting, he'll be able to model and demonstrate and, and put you in any roaming Greco wrestling move that, that you ask. But those of you who appreciate wrestling can appreciate just how talented this young man is and how proud we are to hear that he is going to pursue that dream of be, being a Division One wrestler at the collegiate level. And last but not least, you do have the flyer in your packet, our Crossing God, or one of our Crossing Gods, Ricky Sperrin, who is stationed at the corner of Harris Street and William Street. Ricky will be recognized on Friday, who will receive an honorable mention, even though he won't be recognized as the national or the Massachusetts Crossing God of the Year, he will be receiving an honorable mention. The ceremony will be conducted live via Zoom, starting at 10:00 AM on Friday. For anyone who wishes to attend or wishes to view, the information is in your packet. For anyone who knows Ricky, Ricky is just the heart and soul of what makes our Crossing Gods so special. He's there to greet the kids, rain, snow, sleet, no, sun, he's there every morning with a big smile to greet the kids. He's also, I've seen him taking a few kids aside, passing on valuable life lessons. So he's just a great individual, a lot of life, a lot of spirit, and we're very proud to have one of our Crossing Guys recognized for an honorable mention. So I hope some of you can attend, and if you do happen to see Ricky in the morning, drive by and give him a couple beeps, he appreciates it. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Administrative Business Staffing Report, if there's no discussion, we can take a motion to receive and place on file. Mr. Fiore?
I need to vote present in my wife's summer school appointment.
Received and placed on file.
Do we need any votes on the staffing report? Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Motion made, is there a second? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself and Mr. Enos. Also, in attendance were Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. Superintendent Cabral joined us later. First of all, we approved replenishing the Student Activities Account at Taunton High School in the amount of $14,682.96. We approved a Bill's Payable Warrant in the amount of $1,045,233.79. And we received a Facilities Report from Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. Construction has begun on the improvements to the Taunton High School Athletic Fields. Target date for completion is set for August. Mrs. Moynihan and members of her staff have been attending meetings at City Hall on the new municipal accounting system and working on integrating our school department system with the municipal system, and also right now working on closing out the Fiscal 22 Budget and preparation for entering into the Fiscal 23. And with that, the meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore.
Received and placed on file.
Do we receive it or accept it with any recommendations?
Should be accepted.
Accepted.
Thank you. No, that's okay, so there's a motion to accept the report and recommendations, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Cafeteria Subcommittee, Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 24th, 2022, the Cafeteria Subcommittee met, and attendance were John Cabral, Chris Barata, Brenda Moynihan, Dr. Cheryl Butts, Attorney David Gay. Cafeteria Subcommittee was myself, Mr. Enos, Mr. Viera was absent. Cafeteria Union Reps in attendance were Joe Mcardle, Mary Heim, Brenda Brennan, Donna Poirier. Meeting was called to order at 2:31 PM. Mr. Palowski made the motion to go into executive session without returning to open session, seconded by Mr. Enos, unanimous roll call vote. Mr. Cabral presented the Cafeteria Union Reps with the TPS Administration Proposal, and Mr. Mcardle presented the Cafeteria Subcommittee with the Union's Proposal. Mr. Cabral requested a 20-minute recess, which was agreed to by Mrs. Heim. After the recess, the following was communicated by Mr. Cabral regarding the Union proposal. Items one through four, six, and nine are on hold pending further investigation and analysis. Cafeteria Subcommittee rejects item five and refers the Union Reps to the TPS Administration Proposal. Item eight is rejected, item seven rejected pending enrollment of the Cafeteria Staff into the frontline payroll system. Future negotiate, the future negotiation date of June 8th was rescheduled to June 17th. The third date of July 18th remains, negotiations will resume on June 17th. Mr. Enos made the motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Palowski, unanimous vote. Meeting was adjourned at 3:33 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Can we get a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. There's no new business? Unfinished business. Mulcahy Elementary School Bathroom Fixtures.
I believe Mrs. Moynihan will be providing us with an update, as this was an item that was brought to our attention that required the administration's attention.
So I have been working with Principal Katie Takuta and her custodial staff, Francisco Ivora, who is the head custodian, and we have brought out the, brought out the list of items that has been questioned. Now, I just want to clarify, the bathroom fixtures itself, like toilet dispensers or soap dispensers are securely on there. There are other issues that are dealing with faucets and, and sinks. So I have, well, I should say, I did. Principal Takuta put together that list, and I did forward it, a comprehensive list, to our OPM, and they are going to work with the design team and check things out by bathrooms, because they have listed every single one, and, and they will report an update as soon as they can.
Thank you, Ms. Moynihan. Mr., Superintendent Cabral?
So I, Mrs. Moynihan, I believe the, correct me if I'm wrong, the project has not officially been closed, so this would still fall under the, this would still fall on the jurisdiction of the project as it has not been officially closed.
Correct, we have still, I believe we're like 99 point something, so we are, we have not closed out the project. So they, we do have the OPM on, on staff, and they do, do visits quite a bit.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
Yeah, one question, Mrs. Moynihan, on the signage at the front of the school, do we know what happened to the letters yet?
We do, and we do have a visual of who we believe caused the damage, which has been circulated throughout our schools and throughout certain departments in the city, and we are working very closely to identify the individual. But meanwhile, I believe the architects and our owner's project manager are working with the design team to develop a solution so that that does not occur again.
Thank you.
But meanwhile, it still doesn't look very nice out there with the letters.
I think you know how I feel about having our buildings be aesthetically pleasing, and making sure that students and the public know that our tax dollars, I say our tax dollars are being used wisely to make sure that our buildings now are always furnished appropriately. So yes, I'm not pleased with, with the vandalism that took place at a brand-new school, but we are working with the owner's project manager and the architect team to come up with a solution to make sure that that does not happen again. But I also know that anyone out there who has any information, please contact the school department, because we want to make sure that this has not happened again, and we also want to restore, restore the signage to a traditional condition.
Mr. Cabral, do you know by any chance if, if there's any way that we could change those letters and have somebody engrave them in like they do at like a tombstone or something?
So I believe that's part of the schematic, that the architect and the design team is coming up with something that'll be a permanent solution so that this does not occur again.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you may recall 20-plus years ago, we had similar vandalism at the Freeman, or the Oakland Complex, and again, after some growing errors, we got it right, and we have not experienced similar vandalism since. So I think in time, we will, we will come with a solution that'll make the public very happy.
Thank you. The next item is Director of School Counseling and Social Emotional Learning Job Description is moving to a third reading.
Motion to continue to a third reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Did you want to comment on that, Mr. Cabral, first?
I'll just, earlier in the day, we have, we do have a school board member who's not present, and I know this was an item that we spent about 40, 45 minutes discussion, discussing at the last meeting. So if the committee wishes to hold off, I understand why the commission, the committee would want to hold off until we have a full board. would want to hold off until we have a full board, uh, to continue deliberation and then have a final vote. But I also understand that there are certain members on the board who would wish to pursue action, 'cause they feel, um, which would, been shared with me, they feel that there's been enough opportunity to discuss this item, and knowing that we're getting later, it's getting later into the school year, and we're approaching the summer months, it's gonna be very difficult to have a full committee, uh, together to cast a vote. So if, if the committee wishes to delay until we have the full members, I would be in support of that, 'cause I just want to make sure that we do this right, knowing that we had the length of discussion that we had the last meeting. But I also understand, uh, that we did have five votes at the last meeting. I don't think much is gonna change if we had the vote again, but I could be wrong. But I think this might be something that you want to discuss now to this, to decide which direction the committee wants to go in. And I can respect either option, holding off or having the final vote today.
Okay, and, and it's up to the wishes of the school committee. It is appropriate to vote, because it is on the agenda. The school committee may wish to take a vote to move it to the next agenda, but it is to, it is appropriate to vote. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems to me that since there is still another vote to be taken place, if there's anybody who does have further issue, there's still an opportunity then. And I think, uh, it's best that we move things along, and if we have to stop it at a later point, uh, at least we'll have gotten to a point where we know where we are.
We will. And I, I just want to remind the members that, you know, discussion is fine, but having the same discussion three times in a row is not always necessary. Uh, so what, so at this point, there is a motion on the floor, and there's a second. So unless that's withdrawn, we're gonna move forward on discussion. Mrs. Fagan?
On discussion. Um, we all know who isn't here. It's, it's the Chairman of the School Committee, who I have been working very closely with. I know this was something he certainly wanted to be involved with, and I think out of respect for the job he's been doing for us, I think we could honor that. That, that's the way I feel about it. I, I know that he has gone above and beyond in trying to keep everybody on this committee informed. He does, he wants everybody to know what's going on. I certainly know he involves me. We have meetings before. We have school committee meetings, and I've been an integral part of, of being able to do that. And I feel that all of you, uh, we keep you so well-informed, and this was just one request that he's, he's made, and I think because he's done such a really good job representing us and everywhere I've been with him, that he does speak for the school committee.
So, Mrs. Fagan, was there an actual request from Mr. DeMello to you?
Yes, it was.
To, okay.
And, and to.
That, that was information unknown, I think, a few minutes ago?
Well, that's, I just wanted to share that. I think he's done a, a very good job as Chairman of this committee. I know it's been good for me to be working with him. Uh, things that I know that because I've been here longer, he, he wants input from, he wants input from everybody, and it was, this was just a request he made. He said he'd like to be here as part of this, and I don't know if it's gonna make that much of a difference, but we're still looking for other people for jobs, too. I don't think we're gonna have a problem. I just, I just feel that I, I would like to do that to him.
Okay, so on this motion, there's a motion and a second on the floor. On discussion, Mr. Laura.
When is the next full committee meeting?
The next, well, the, our next scheduled meeting is our budget hearing, July 15th. June, sorry, June 15th.
June 15th. So we're looking at a couple of weeks?
And I, we, I want to check, we, I think we need to check something, too. I believe this is our third reading, not our second reading.
Yeah, that's correct. That's my understanding.
My understanding is it's a second to a third reading?
Yep.
Third reading? Right. Yeah. Mr. Viera?
I, I just want to say that I agree with Mrs. Fagan. I think, uh, Chairman's done a wonderful job keeping us all in the loop with everything going on, and I, too, would also like to, uh, vote on the matter with a full school board.
Okay. What, thank you. What are the wishes of the maker of the motion?
I want to remain as it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? I couldn't understand.
I want, I made the motion to bring it to a third reading, and I'm gonna keep it that way.
All right. Um, I agree with that and discussion, just, I feel with the summer months coming, it is gonna be tough for us to get a full board on, and to move this forward, so if that takes another month and a half, I, I don't want to see that happen. And if we do hold it for one particular member, I think that should be respected for every member, um, not just based on the amount of work or, you know, the role of that member. So I would just respectfully ask that we do move on with it, um, just based on, I don't believe that much is gonna change, and if we do have another reading, he will have input then.
Mr. Laura?
Clarification. Um, so in two weeks, let's say it is postponed for this evening. In two weeks, a vote is taken for the third, and then?
Done. So if we do the third reading tonight, we're done. If we hold off until June 15th, that's a third reading, and we're done. Three readings, and it becomes possible.
So then, at this point, I wouldn't be able to be at the June 15th one, and I would request that we wait until I'm able to be present as well.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor, and the second, we'll move forward with the motion on a roll call vote, since it's the third reading.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.